Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is January the thirteenth. I'm welcoming you into the city council meeting. We'd like to have the call of order, please. Sorry.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corey, if you would do us down with base of threat?
I've been at the percuties, that seems to be here. All right. Dear Lord, please allow us to make sound judgments for the community that we live in. And also, please give us guidance in doing so. In your name we pray.
I'm going to make an emotion to amend the agenda. I'm sorry. I skipped it. I'm not sure where everybody's here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lawson.
You're here.
Mr. Booth. Mr. Clement. Ms. Sonic.
Here.
Mr. Dumpy.
Here.
Ms. Flowers. Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Okay, I make a motion to forgive John Flowers. Excuse. John Flowers. Gray Clement. And Justin.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Turn off the phone, please.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to amend the agenda for the following executive session under Ohio Revise Code 121.22G for personnel and legal matters.
So moved.
I will be inviting in Ms. Myers, Chief Tolliver, and Oliver Chappington, please.
So moved. Second. I would just advise the board for the motion to be a little bit more specific, maybe just discuss finding those to get towards range with the special counsel and then find the three.
If you get them. I'm sorry. That's what you said. We have some legalese to take care of your disponent, folks.
Yeah, I second that if you've got.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Ms. Sonic.
Yes.
Time is seven oh one.
Mr. Roeb, did any vote on actually going in there?
Yeah.
They did.
Ten thousand a minute.
They did.
Sorry, I wasn't paying.
She made a motion about.
Yeah, okay.
She wanted to make a motion about.
That's what I'm asking.
It's eight fourteen and we're coming back in from the executive council.
Yep, so moved.
Motion, please.
Yep, so moved. I'll second that.
Has everyone had a chance to read the meetings? We have, I'm sorry. Roll call again, I'm sorry.
Lawson. Yes.
Sonic.
Yes.
Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Has everyone read the amendments from the last meeting? Any changes or corrections, additions?
Nope. Okay, is that so moved?
Ms. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Chappington, if you might could take the podium or stay there, what do you want to do?
Yes. Well, good evening. City Council and folks at home, this is real quick, the check report. I'll state what was in my email to you folks just for anyone who might be watching, but usually this would be at the auditor's report with the unusual schedule from the first week of December to now. I've asked you folks to review some checks so that they're not too far dated in the past. It's a busy report, end of year is always busy. Department's pushing out a ton of stuff that they're working on and closing out for the year. And of course, there's nothing in 2025 yet because we're waiting county approval this week of the city's budget, at which point all steps have been completed and we can go right ahead, actually a week ahead of schedule from last year. Can take any questions or thoughts, or?
I have one, if I may.
Yeah.
Who's Whitmer Public Safety Group that we paid $234,000?
Oh, I think.
That's DB Weber, I think.
I was gonna say Whitmer got 763?
No, this one.
Indeed.
On the very front page, on the third.
Oh, I apologize, the one, oh, I never did. My bad.
That's all right.
I was at the wrong line.
That's all good. I can't make the print any bigger on this one. Try it four ways someday.
Make it hard on my ladies.
Well, I was gonna say even I was lining up the paper here to look at it, so. Any other questions? Yes.
The $234,000, is that road or what?
DB Weber's working on a water project.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Specifically, I think there, well, I don't want to speak for Jason, but I think there are no water lines right now. All right, well, no other questions or thoughts? I'll just ask for approval of the check report and I'll get out of your hair.
Questions are approved.
So moved, second.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Ms. Sonic.
Yes. Any citizens' comments? Go right ahead, Ms. I always have something good to say and I got four or five things good to say because they've been amazing. First of all, the cats. That's going to take place and we want to thank Neil Summers once again for allowing us to get a reduced rate on the spay and neuter and that is really helpful. We just have to convince everybody that's got a carriage to bring in, it might be hard. Then there was the firehouse at Christmas time when they did the toys. This is my first opportunity to see that. It was absolutely amazing. The people that came in were wonderful and genuine and they had a row that had some blankets rolled up and a young man came up and he said, instead of my toy, can I get a blanket for my mom? How nice is that? So I cheated and I said, get that animal toy. Because, why not? And then I found I needed to get a passport and I went to the post office. They have a complete service there and it's pretty easy peasy and they take your picture, which, anyway, they didn't make it lovely, but in two months you can get your passport with the service and it's cheap and an easy way to do it. And then there was the snow. I live on West Washington Street and the people there were absolutely amazing. If somebody needed something done, they were there. We did the fire hydrant at the corner of Washington Street and Adams Street because he put out a thing that said, if anybody's around, fire hydrant, clean it out. So Scott Weaver went out and cleaned the fire hydrant off. And then somebody came down and with a blower and did both sides of West Washington Street down to the square. And if somebody needed something else done, they were there. This is who we need to be as the people of Nelsonville. He has some very good neighbors. But I wasn't the only place that had the good neighbors. But some people, you know, if you've got real people, they can't do it. But they did help in many, many places, make waves and everything. And that's all I wanted to say because there are some very good things going on in Nelsonville. Thank you. And just to add to what Joanne said, I'm very thankful to my neighbors across the street who came over and took care of my sidewalk because it's very hard for me to do that. And thank you to the city for coming through the alley and allowing me to get out of my garage to get to my doctor's appointments. I really appreciate that. And with that, do we have any business organizational comments? Comment, I'm sorry, committee discussions? I see the chief of fire is here. Do you have anything to say, sir?
Just a regular update.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now? That was a good job.
All right. Well, this is actually a short one anyways. So typically, you always hear this from my updates. We're still partnering with Red Cross for smoke alarm installs within the city. Remember, these alarms are installed by car park members at the Red Cross program. They still have to work it out on site. These are replenished as they are needed. The significant snowfall coupled with dripping snow and plowing needs to mainly bury fire hydrants within the city. Crews and myself, we were out digging fire hydrants out around the city and we're still continuing that now to clean emergency calls. Last week, water department received Laura's donation of a bagged ice melt from Integrative Services. I stopped by and said they were having problems with their spreader. This particular product didn't work very well with their spreader and asked if we could do something with it. So I put out a post on our page and started giving out bags to households in need in the city of Nelsonville. I actually have seven bags left. So if somebody's in need, they contact the station and we'll make sure to get a bag. We're still partnering with Water and Johnson going through the car department right now. We are actually cleaning a delivery of the donated gear and some building supplies. Mainly, right now, we're looking at rolled insulation, insulation boards to help keep people warm during the elements. People are living in makeshift buildings and they need more insulation. We're probably gonna leave the first of next week, maybe 21st through the 23rd, we're not sure yet. We're trying to get as much product and supplies as we can before we take off with the trailer. And with this inclement weather coming in, I didn't want our chief, myself, you know, and Water and Water Chief to be going during this event in case they have something I have to share. So approximately 20:52 hours on Sunday, which was last night, we were alerted for a partial structure collapse, 92 Chestnut Street. For those that are familiar, this is a house that I believe was condemned again by the city of Nelsonville or was condemned again by the city. This is a house that was in disrepair. You might notice, you might have noticed the house roof siding. Well, with the heavy load of the snow, we had a partial collapse of that structure last night. So our crew in the Nelsonville Police Department, because of the structural integrity of the building, conducted a search from the outside and concluded there was no one in the building. But then we had a problem. We had a collapse and I had Chestnut Street closed down and I had houses on either side that are what is considered a collapse of. So the decision was made in the city manager's office to use some equipment and take down the rest of the structure that was standing. That way, it didn't promote a safety issue and I could actually reopen Chestnut Street. Last night, we had individuals that couldn't even leave their home because they couldn't use their Porsche to come through. So that's why that decision was made. So we have the potential to see dangerous electric adapters coming in the next few days, next week. And per normal RPA procedure, if we lose power and have a need in the city, my department will set up a emergency station here at City Hall. We've done that in the past. Most of the time, we find that there is not a need that we're in constant contact with the EMA's office and that's the 1091. If there is a need, they start getting phone calls. The director will call me, say, hey, we've got so and so in the city that doesn't have power or we have someone that might not be able to get to their oxygen and we'll make arrangements for them. So I've got.
Thank you, chief. Okay, I guess I jumped ahead. Park and hands, if you might could speak.
Yeah, I've got my stats for December of '24. We had 291 calls for service, conducted 137 traffic stops, issued 64 traffic citations, six parking citations, investigated seven traffic crashes, made 23 criminal arrests and 18 warrant arrests. And I've got my year-end total stats for all of 2024, which had us at 4,342 calls for service, 837 traffic stops, 367 traffic citations, 83 parking citations, 93 traffic crashes, 299 criminal arrests and 158 warrant arrests.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Roeb, would you like to speak, also, in the city?
Sure, so we don't have a whole lot at this time to report other than my information is the ad hoc commission that council had authorized and created at the last meeting.
Right.
My understanding, there are only been five applicants who have submitted letters of interest. Madam Quirk, I don't know if there's been any update to that number. So, which is lower than the number of seats that council established on the commission. So I don't know, I don't know what council's pleasure is on that, but it's seen with be difficult right now the way the, well, the way the law's written would be difficult right now. I get that commission up and running with fewer individuals than required by law. So I just wanted to.
Okay, so the law asks for six, is that correct?
That's currently what it says.
Okay.
And then my information is only five individuals have submitted letters of interest, which of course, five is less than six, but if if my elementary math is correct.
We would like at least two more.
Yeah, at least two more. Can we extend the deadline for letters of interest? And then, because in order to, wouldn't we have to like swear in the members of the committee, too? So that would give us time. If we get more applicants or letters of interest, then we could also then reach out to those individuals and ask them to be at the next council meeting potentially?
Certainly, and I was actually anticipating some of those, I think Ms. LaRue was one of the ones who kind of submitted an application. So I thank her for being here in attendance. Would be nice to have everyone in person, but of course, you know, I know people are busy in the weather and it is, you know, cold through the season, so I want to be respectful. And some people travel far distances. The one thing, so council can always, you know, extend the deadline, whatever council wants and deemed appropriate, whatever its pleasure is. The one thing that I would state, just, we are, time is of the essence. To the extent that anything needs to help address some of the problems that I know we spent a lot of time discussing, to the extent that some of those things would need to be put before the voters at the primary of the deadline for submitting things for the primary is fast push, I believe it's February 5, which is, what, three weeks from now? Even if the commission started, it's work tomorrow. That would be incredibly compressed timeline, so.
So what happens if we don't get the six people we need?
Well, one of my concerns, so I have advised city administration that the costs for implementing issue 23 may be as much as a quarter of a million dollars. The big cost driver there is what if a special election would need to be held, which of course, the Board of Elections would require the city to pay for, which would in and of itself cost six figures. So that's kind of, that's where I'm at the big bulk of that estimate. And of course, it could be a lot lower. That estimate does not include any of the Supreme Court litigation. That was, that estimate I developed prior to that council considering that. So the advantage with putting something on the primary ballot is there's not that additional cost to the city because that's already by law, by state law, a regularly scheduled election. If there has to be a special election in any way just to kind of help facilitate some of the transitional, the city would probably have to look at bearing most and all of the cost of that election, which of course, because of how seriously we treat elections here in our state, rightfully so, that's a substantial cost. It's not the only cost, but it's probably the number one driver. So my view is, you know, whatever cost is needed to, you know, implement the lawfully expressed will the people needs to be done, but I don't know if it can be done without, you know, the voters giving some guidance on how they want the transition to go.
So again, you have to have six.
That's how the law's written right now, yes.
Yes. Counsel could change that, but I guess I just wanted to express kind of,
but we wouldn't be able to change that till the next meeting right now, right? I mean, okay. So if we just extend, so the quicker resolution would be to potentially extend the the deadline for letters of interest for another week, hoping to get a couple more people interested and then at the next regular session meeting, make decisions, swear them in and work up the running.
Yes, and I mean, we can, as you recall, the, by the charter, the city manager is an ex-official member of the commission. Can't vote, but can put things together. So my understanding is definitely this work and heart and like coming up with some ideas to at least, when the commission had its first meeting, give them some points of discussion and hopefully, you know, it can be off the run, which of course, you know, maybe the commission likes them, maybe they don't, but at least they have something to talk about as a starting point. Yeah. So, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, throw the commission under the bus from day one. Just trying to, they have a difficult, very difficult job to do, but, you know, just trying to help them facilitate things. I just wanted to express kind of my concern about what we are under a title.
What I'm hearing from some individuals out there that we really don't need the commission because when the voters voted, we're gonna go back and use everything exactly the way it was before we went, we adopted the charter. That's what I'm hearing from everybody that they're being told, that the polling districts are already set up and everything, that the statue of the government is already set up as how it's supposed to be if we go and that's the way it was voted on in the election.
So there are two different aspects. Two different questions. One is form of government. That question, the only, the only one who can provide an answer to that is the people. Whatever the people say is the form of government under our system, you know, provided they exercise it properly, that's the definitive question. The city doesn't have to stand any challenge that question, that decision. Form of government is, would be, okay, if you have a charter, let the charter say, or do you want to do the statutory form of government? Within those forms of government, there are certain organizational questions. But those aren't reserved only to the people. There are certain authorities that council has to make those decisions. Let me give an example. So under the general statutory form of government, the default is for a city to have a service department and a safety department. Then the safety department would be the police and fire, for example. That's the default. That happens to be the same structure that the Nelsonville City Charter has right now. But there's an option under the statute to have, for council, to combine the service and safety departments into one. Athens has done it. So Athens has a service safety department. That's because the legislative authority in Athens, the council, has opted to exercise that option for consolidating the administration. That's not a form of government issue. That's a government setup and administration issue. So it's not a choice solely for the people. That's a choice for council. Now, before the Nelsonville Charter was adopted, my understanding is Nelsonville also had a service safety director. But when the charter was adopted, that, anything that was done under that previous form of government is dead. The law does not permit a zombie. So by going back to the statutory form of government, we're going back to that default. So Nelsonville will still have separate safety and service departments unless and until council legislatively acts to combine them. So now, the problem is, as I had addressed previously to council, the big concern is salaries for elected officials cannot be changed during their term. That means, as the law is right now, when the mayor is elected in November of this year, that mayor will serve at a zero dollar salary. That salary cannot be increased for four years, for that entire term, which means the elected mayor will have to serve for free. Now, the reason that's an issue is being mayor requires an enormous amount of work. And if that person is not going to be paid, why would anybody want to run for mayor? And if no one runs for mayor because they can't afford to, because they have, you know, a family to provide for, the city's not doing its job in providing for the people to be able to choose the person that they best believe would be the chief executive of the city. And I believe that same answer applies to every single
elected position.
Elected position. Now, again, for council, that's kind of trivial because council's only paid $100 a month. So I'm not worried about council, but I am worried about the city treasurer, the mayor, the city auditor, all of which would require quite a bit of work and would receive zero back. Correct.
Well, from what some people are telling me is what they have been told. from what I've been, from what some people are telling me, is what they have been told, is that because the people voted to go back to the statutory form of government, and it was stated on the ballot that we had back, uh, that had sent it back to the mayor type of deal, with the way they had it before we adopted the charter, which was the pay and all that stuff, the voting districts and everything, it won't, won't change or nothing.
So, so again, the, the, the problem with that view is that conflates the form of government question with the how best to set up the city administration question. And again, the, the distinction between two, form of government, the people and only the people have the authority to make that decision. City administration setup questions, that's council's authority. And so if something is council authority, you can't just flip that, the switch back. Anything council did pre-charter is dead. It's as if it didn't happen unless the charter council implemented it or ratified it. Or the charter, for example, the, the charter actually did a lot of this when the charter was exact, uh, adopted. If you look at the charter, it actually, like, for example, the police department, it said, the, the language, and I think it's pretty close to exactly, not quite exact, it's, "The police department as it now exists shall continue." And what that language meant is, the police department, as it existed pre-charter, continued to exist into the charter, subject to council's authority to oversee and organize the police department. Administratively, so like, if they wanted to change the, the, um, structure in, in some way, you know, like they do with staffing workplaces every year. That, that, that's changes to the police department's structure, um, potentially, like, if they're, you're adding an off, an additional officer, but that's, that's all based off of the charter language. The problem is, we don't have that language going backwards.
Right.
So that, that, that's just an example.
Well, I'm saying, what, what everybody has been told, as far as what I'm hearing.
By whom? By whom?
By different people.
But that just sounds like what Mr. Rube is saying.
From what I hear, what they've been, been, been told by Mr. Smith, Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Brooks, the people out there, because I'm hearing it on viewpoint and everything, that all it is, is everything was set out on the ballot, uh, how it goes back to. So basic, and I just want to clear it up, is that basically, when we go back to the statutory, it's basically starting out. Everything starts out new, correct? Outside of what the state has dictated.
I think that's correct. In, in terms of when the statute is saying, hey, council, you have to make this decision, it's starting from scratch. Yes.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, everybody's, from what I've heard from Greg Smith and the people on viewpoint, spread it, is that everything's all set up, it's hunky dory. All we have to do is go back to the statutory, elect our mayor, elect a new council, and everything's already set up, because we put it on the bound that we go back to the way it was before we had the charter.
Let's just remember though, that all of those individuals that may be stating that are not attorneys and don't have a law agreement.
And, and I understand that, that's why I'm asking the question, because so many people put faith in these individuals that what they're saying is true, and I'm just trying to clarify what the difference is, if it's true or if it's not true from a legal standpoint.
I think it's a valid question. So. So the thing it all goes back to, don't believe what you hear unless there's evidence to support it.
But, but like I say, most people outside of here, in viewpoint, don't hear anything hardly from his counsel but negative. And the thing is, and it gets misled in different ways, that I'm just asking, because the way that it's being portrayed to them is that everything is gonna go back exactly how we was nineteen ninety-four, when they, uh, got away with the, with, when the charter was adopted. I think it was, that everything is gonna go back to that way, with the way it was run, the whole nine yards. But.
Well, I would agree with what your last comment, though, I would agree with that. I, I do think, just kind of going back on, like, for example, the mayoral salary, I, I don't know if there's a way to solve that problem without submitting something to the voters to decide, so, um, again, going back to my point about, you know, if, if there's a way to get something on the primary ballot for clarity, that would certainly be the most efficient way for the city. Else, there may have to be a special election, which, again, hey, if we have to do a special election, we have to do a special election, but, well, you know, I, I'm, I, I know, you know.
The, the reason I bring it up is because a lot of the citizens believe there's, that there's nothing that needs to be done in order for that to make it happen.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, I just, you know, um, the point needs to be stated that those are also individuals that are not currently involved in the city, they're not currently attorneys representing the city, or have, you know, degrees in law. But I do have, it does raise a concern, though, if seventy percent of the people voted to change the form of government, why is it that we have four citizens that have put forth their names to be on this commission to, to lead the committee that we have formed? And of course, one that's still not qualified elector put his name in. So why is it that we have four citizens and one non-qualified elector putting their name in to be on this commission? We can't even seem to fulfill the six individuals to guide the process? Why is that? If seventy percent of the people think that that is the absolute way that it needs to, that we need to move, why is there four people and, you know?
If, if, if I may, Mr. T, and I, you know, I don't know the answer to the question, but, but one thing that does occur to me, I, I think if, you know, as you recall, in setting up that commission, council, by, by law, established that that commission is going to be independent from council in order to provide, you know, basically a fresh perspective to council and, and unvarnished advice, and I think, I think maybe that might be a key, is just to explain to people that this commission is independent of council, it can't do anything on its own, because the charter doesn't allow council to set up a, you know, a commission to take its authority away, but just in terms of kind of saying, hey, you're here to provide independent advice to council, perhaps that would get?
But I, but technically, though, all those commissions and boards that we currently have are independent of council. And, and they are supposed to be made up, comprised of individuals within the community, and then are the sounding board to the, the respective committees that are formed of council members to be able to help guide, you know, legislation within the city. That's, that's how the charter's designed. So it, it's in no, you know, it's not really different per se, um, of how it's been for the last, you know, thirty years, but, um, I think there's that misconception in general.
And also, I, I applaud the four people who have put their names in.
I do too.
Uh, we, I really just want to say, I greatly appreciate their input, um, they're very, all very knowledgeable. Uh, and, but at the same time, I do see why people are not interested, because look at the personal attacks that come after people. I mean, you do one thing against, that someone perceives as wrong, and you become a target. And fortunately for this commission, they will not be part of council, they'll work independent of council. So they should be free to do what they need to do to get this done. So I implore the community, please, if you have, if there's two more people out there that would like to be a part of this, please come forward, so that we can move this uh, issue forward that seventy percent of the people voted for, let's, let's get two more. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I would like to, uh, make a small suggestion, uh, with what you've said is everything, and the, so, you're not, excuse me, suggestion to have a council meeting in a week instead of the two weeks, this has to be a big consideration. And also, one other thing you have to remember, we're in precincts now, we were in wards before.
Right.
That's
Absolutely. Correct. That was the, sorry, I slipped my mind, I, um, one, one other update, so, I've been contacted by folks with the state league of women's voters who are expressing willingness to offer one of their experts who's worked on state district maps to help, um, assist if, you know, the city needs or would like it, uh, assistance in, um, redrawing the ward maps. Um, my inclination is, hey, if it's kind of nice to have someone volunteering to help, um, especially an organization that will do it at no cost to the city, actually.
Somebody with experience.
With a lot of experience, that's amazing.
Wouldn't that be the commission's fault, the voting man instead of ours?
Um, well, council could always pull it, pull it in, but, you know, it certainly would be, um, advisable to get the commission's kind of view first on it.
I think that the, I think the council can provide the resource, but, you know, the commission would be ultimately responsible for it, if they want to engage the resource, so. But I, but from the one, one of the four members that actually applied that's here, sounds like there may be interest in that, so.
I'm, I'm a, I, I'm a big fan of the, the work, the league of women's, women voters.
I agree.
And, and the ability to have someone who's had experience on this topic, provided by them, is, is huge.
Yes.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you, but the, but the overall decision would be from the, that council instead of from us, us council members, it would be from that commission.
I think that would be one, yeah, item for them to look into.
I mean, we could provide them with the information and the opportunity, and if they decide to do it, that's up to them.
Yeah, yeah.
Because like I say, it's supposed to be independent from council, and don't want to be perceived that council's picking people who would
Sure.
But there again, we cannot proceed with this commission unless there's six people, is that correct?
That's the way the law is written.
Can, can we as council, can we as council create an ordinance to say we can decrease it by two people?
Uh, you could do that, but it would need two readings at this point, because there's not enough to suspend the two readings. I mean, council could do that, it would just take two readings plus thirty days, um, to go into effect. Again, council can do that, um, that would obviously be past the February five deadline, um. That's not to say, uh, it's not to say the conversation stops on February five, I mean, the conversation just really begins on February five, but it's just, there's a lot of, you know, we're, we're kind of always been on a very compressed timeline on this, and you want to true that. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Rube.
Now, we, if we get something going, could we create a special meeting and pass it under emergency measure, if we had all council members there?
Yes, and I mean, I think, I think Ms. LaRue's suggestion for a special council meeting, um, along with the second regular, I think that's an excellent idea. Um, I know council's busy, but, uh,
One aside, Laura was here, but she left because the meeting was going on too long. Another member that applied is in Wyoming for his ninth birthday, and the other one, Hocking College opened today, so they wanted to be here. So you want a special council meeting to do exactly what?
Basically, basically say that we, we can go with the four people twice the six people.
So, so here, first of all, so, okay, so we can try to set a, it's, okay, a special meeting. Here's, here's the challenge I think we're gonna run into now, right, is we need to have a day. We have one that's sick, we have one that's with family, two that are with family technically, right? So we have to make it on a day that everybody's, you got at least five people, because you're gonna have to pass it on emergency, so I wouldn't be setting a date until we hear from all council members to see what date they can make. The ordinance you can make to change it, or we can just try to get more letters of interest as well.
Well, we, I, I, I want to say, and we keep going, trying to get the, the letters of interest,
Okay.
because we're on a short time span.
I understand that, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't set a date until we've heard from all council members on whether or not.
Right, I mean, we'll get with all council members, I mean, it's not just saying, set up a special meeting, it is that we need to, we need to do something, we need to do it now, instead of sit back on our heels and not do.
Not disagreeing, not disagreeing, but I think, I think that that decision is not something that can be made right at this moment.
Oh, I'm not saying, I mean,
But at that point, for the sake-
That was the question I asked, if we could do that.
I would just say, for the sake of time, then now we just move on to, because we've got more meeting to cover, so.
They don't, you might move on. That horse.
Okay, we're going to a second reading here, ordinance ninety-four, twenty-four, somewhere there, there's and ordinance increasing sewer rates by four percent. Whereas based upon the financial projections from Rural Community Assistance Partnership, or ARCAS, the June twenty twenty version sewer rates needed to be increased by five percent beginning on January first two thousand twenty-four to complete the rates required to finance the new city of Nelsonville sewer plant. Whereas sewer rates must be increased in twenty twenty-five to meet the funding for the new sewer plant and ensure operation of the sewer plant remains on sound financial footing. Whereas a four percent increase in sewer rates is sufficient to maintain sound financial operations of the sewer plant. Whereas the revenues received as a result of the four percent increase in sewer rates shall be used only to cover increased costs of sewer plant operation and not for equipment. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. After the effective date of this ordinance, the sewer rates in twenty twenty-five are increased as follows. In town, fifteen hundred gallon minimum is twenty-one dollars thirty-one cents. For every one thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred, it is twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. Out of town, town rate for the fifteen hundred gallon minimum is thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. And for every thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred, it is nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Hocking County Commissioners rate is, uh, five fifty per one thousand gallon. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. Accordingly, pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, section four point one one, this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after passage. Will enacted by council on second reading on the thirteenth day of January two thousand twenty-five.
It wasn't the second reading. Second reading, it wasn't. It's the second reading. The second reading. Motion to adopt.
Subdue.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Do I tell what the ordinance is? Introduce it. Ordinance zero one two five, may I have someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the Nelsonville Police Department to receive National Crime Information Center entries from the Hocking College Police Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the campus of Hocking College is located within the corporation limits of the city of Nelsonville. Whereas the Board of Crusades of Hocking College is scheduled to meet on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and it is anticipated that the board will vote at that meeting to dissolve the Hocking College Police Department. Whereas the Hocking College Police Department maintains various National Crime Information Center, or NCIC, entries. Whereas the Hocking College Police Department is in need of transferring its NCIC entry. Whereas the Nelsonville Police Chief has determined that the Nelsonville Police Department can receive the NCIC entries from Hocking College. Whereas council deems it appropriate and in the best interest of the city- Whereas council deems it appropriate and in the best interest of the city to authorize the Nelsonville Police Department to receive the N C I C entry from Hocking College. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Nelsonville Police Department is hereby authorized to receive from the Hocking College Police Department the various National Crime Information Center entries now maintained by the Hocking College Police Department. The Nelsonville Police Chief is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps reasonably necessary to receive the Hocking College N C I C entries. The Nelsonville Police Chief is hereby authorized to enter into any and all agreements reasonably necessary to effectuate the transfer of the Hocking College N C I C entries to the Nelsonville Police Department. In the event the Hocking College Board of Trustees does not vote to dissolve the Hocking College Police Department at the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, and the Hocking College Police Department remains in existence, the Nelsonville Police Chief is hereby authorized to negotiate such further agreements with the Hocking College Police Department that may be necessary regarding the custody of the Hocking College N C I C entries. Fully, um, this ordinance shall be kind of effective at the earliest date provided by law. Fully enacted by council on second reading the twenty-seventh day of Jan- or January two thousand twenty-five.
Ordinance zero two twenty-five, that's one please introduce.
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance approving change order six for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to compensate the project contractor for numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. Whereas the numerous unknown conditions encountered include installing two additional ten-inch gate valves and boxes and providing for the final cost balance for the actual installed quantities of work. Whereas this will be change order six for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by one hundred thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Whereas the funds to cover the increase will be drawn from the continued proportion of the project funding in which there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. City Council hereby approves change order six for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two Project as described or particularly in exhibit one, which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as is fully written within. The contract price shall be increased by some of ten, one hundred thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents to address installing two additional ten-inch gate valve and valves and boxes and providing for the final cost balance for the actual installed quantities of work. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief shall have authority to enter into, accept and or authorize change order six for the project. City Council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance will be effective at the earliest date provided by law, fully enacted by council on second reading the twenty-seventh day of Janu- January two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, we have uh resolution twenty-three twenty-nine.
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing the city treasurer to sign a deposit placement agreement with People's Bank. Whereas People's Bank has been selected by the city treasurer as an appropriate financial institution with which the city may invest funds, continuing to use People's Bank financial services. Whereas People's Bank requires any deposit placement agreement to be executed to ensure the city may continue to use People's Bank financial services. Whereas the city council finds it is in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville to enter into such an agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to enter into the deposit placement agreement attached heretofore as exhibit A with People's Bank. The fully executed copy of the deposit placement agreement shall be maintained by the Nelsonville Finance Carpet. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirement. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully adopted by council on first reading the thirteenth day of January two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President. So moved. I'll second that.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Malane, you're all set, buddy.
Do you have any additional questions for the city energy department?
Yeah, I'll break you in brief. Um, so over the course of these last couple of snow days, the street floor has spread around two hundred and ten tons of salt on the city streets, so they've been working really hard to keep the streets clean. Um, I think it's looking to look good out there. I just want everyone to keep in mind that the areas that have been salted that are not completely cleared yet, if the temperatures remain below freezing, it still takes the salt time to work. So it lowers the melting temperature of the water, so it'll take a few sunny days to clear up any more spots and have some lights that have been salted. And if it does snow again, make sure everyone tries to leave ample room for the guys to do their work. Um, we've taken in about five hundred and thirty rental registration permits and brought in about almost sixteen thousand dollars from that. We've also condemned, or we've given given a notice of condemnation to a house on Franklin Street. So if you can fly with that in the property, then you can. Uh, otherwise, that's all I have, ready.
Thank you.
Would it be, the the people in our area are so pleased with the work that the city's done. And they're also pleased that if they don't.
Curious than.
That's true, but sometimes for some of them, it's not as easy. Okay, last but not least, we have begun at the order and Mr. Thompson, thanks, I'd start this off.
Okay, um. Um. Since the last meeting, um, there was some criticism on Facebook about a few things. And and I took, I took the opportunity to actually speak to a person who's a resident of the community who has moved away, and she had some very valid points about professionalism, about arguing um and stuff, and and I agreed with her. And um, you know, it's a little late for New Year's resolution, but I think that all of us as councils as a whole that we should uh try and put differences aside and and work together um as a team. Um, also, I would like to uh put some prayers out there for some people in our community that are having some health issues. Um, I will not name names, but I think we know who they are. I wish that I hope that a speedy recovery, um, to be back to our community, so that, Mr. Taylor. Um, yeah, I agree with the the uh prayers, I know we got some folks in the community now that need some prayers, additional prayers. So uh ask for people to, you know, keep your neighbors, your friends in in prayers and thoughts. And um I do agree um with Mr. Rue that uh I I think our our crews have done a really nice job um in all of our departments, uh cleaning the streets, keeping them safe, ensuring that people are, you know, are safe, and we have folks in this community that are homeless and and we and we need to make sure that they are taken care of, they have food, they have shelter. And I see all our uh city resources being utilized to, you know, accommodate that in the city, and I appreciate that, so. And then lastly, I want to say congratulations to the Ohio State Buckeyes, going to national championship, sorry for all my Catholic friends. But uh.
Let's go Bucks.
Go Bucks.
Well, first of all, I want to commend the fire department, Chief Barber, his organization, for all the good they've done through holidays with our local community, with all the charitable organizations, and helping to organize the uh relief to help out the people in North Carolina coming up here shortly. Uh, I do want to commend the utilities department for an outstanding job through the snowstorm that we just had. We're limited individuals and they support them remarkably with much of hours and stuff. And the big thing is, is with this cold weather and stuff, check on your neighbors, especially if they're under winter. And see, make sure they're okay, because uh you never know in in this type of weather. So you look, kind of look out for your neighbors and make sure things are running good for them. And that's all I got.
I would like to thank the city for all it's done as far as the snow removal, all the things that you've done, Chief, to help make Christmas happen, for the safety of the town. And I'd like to thank my fellow committee or council members for all the stuff that you've been going through. I just hope that the citizens of Nelson understand this council is trying to do what you voted on. You cannot believe everything you hear unless it's a bona fide attorney. You have heard our attorney tonight. All I can say is, I pray you know what you're doing in two thousand twenty-six, thank you. And with that, I'm ready to motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
I thought you had another leader.
No, it it changed.
Yes. Yes, he's voluntary, he's just voluntary.
Would you want to bend the executive statute again?
No, no.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Taylor?
Sure.
And we're out of here.